City council meeting for Tuesday, December the 20th to order roll call.
Councilmember Abidi?
Here.
Berg?
Here.
Gallops is absent. Johnson? Mattson?
Here.
Shoblam?
Here.
And Mayor Robinson?
Here. All please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the last city council member or council meeting for 2016. At this time, the chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Merle, second by Lynn. Any further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carius. That moves us on to public input this evening. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to address the council under public input? Seeing there is no one, we will move on to the consent agenda. Items on this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For the folks at home, I'll read the consent agenda. Item A is the just and correct claims for the accounting period ending December the 16th, 2016. Item B are the meeting minutes for the December the 6th, 2016 city council meeting. Item C, the second reading and adoption of ordinance 348 and summary of publication amending chapter 152 of the Cannon Falls City Code by rezoning a certain property from a B2 highway business district to an L1 limited industrial district. Item D, resolution 2247 approving a CUP slash variance for Dudley Flodeen, Dudley's Pizza. Item E, resolution 2248 approving preliminary plat for Southview Acres. Item F, approve agreement with Goodyear County for state building code administration. Item G, agreement with Goodyear County for planning and zoning assistance. Item H, approving for proposals for Third Street Bridge Project. Item I, resolution 2249 authorizing special assessment and reapportionment for Cannon Falls Mall and Frosty Transport Properties. Item J, approve and knock to practice massage in the city limits. Item K, approve materials and installation quote for radio equipment for damn siren. Are there any items anybody wishes to remove?
I do. I would like D, E, and G.
D, E, and G. So those will become items C, D, and E on the, under council business. D, E, and G, you said?
Yeah, D, E, and G.
Okay. Any others? If not, the chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items D, E, and G.
Second.
Have a motion by Merle, second by Lynn. Any further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carius. That moves us on to council business. Item A is determine final assessments for certain West Side Two corner lots, and I'll turn it over to Ron.
Thank you. May recall on December, or actually the second meeting in November, we approved the assessment role for the West Side Two Public Improvement Project. There was still some discussion left on the corner lots as far as the assessments on York Street and Dow. And as it was, the Dow was done in 19, or excuse me, 2001. York Street was done in 2000, York was done in, excuse me, let's try this again. Dow was 2001, York was 1998. So we're looking at eighteen years on the one and sixteen, roughly fifteen years on the other one that there were assessments. So Lynell and I met with Greg Anderson, engineer, to look specifically at these projects and look at the assessments, and also looked at the assessment policy itself. And our conclusion, based on looking at the assessment policy, where it states that, it says it's recommended that on corner lots where the improvements are constructed on one street only, an assessment be levied on that frontage that has improved, whether it is the short lot frontage or the longer side frontage. And but it gets to the end and it says, if the per lot or per unit assessment method is used, which it was in this case, the, these lots will not be assessed for improvements done on the other facing frontage if said improvements are done within 10 years of the original project assessment date. Therefore, our recommendation after looking at the materials, looking at the policy, is that there would be no change. The corner lots were included in the assessment role that the majority of the other assessment or the other parcels were assessed at, which was a $55.21 amount.
Yeah, $55.21. Yep. Okay. Any discussion?
I guess I agree with what the staff has recommended. It's been our policy. We've been pretty, we've had stuck to that policy for a number of years, and so I don't see any change in it.
I mean, it's been that way since I've been on the council.
It's been that way since I've been paying a corner lot, so. No, but I mean, but it's just, it has been that way for a number of years, so. And it's worked for the city, and I think we should stay with it.
Then the chair will take a motion to not take any action. Have a motion by Merle.
Second.
Oh, go ahead. Second?
Second by Cedar?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carius. And that will move us on to item 7B, which... Can we get this crazy thing to work tonight?
Yeah, mine doesn't.
The resolution 2250 approving the development agreement with BFD of Cannon Falls. Mr. Maroney?
Thank you. Council recall that on the December 6th meeting two weeks ago, you held a public hearing relating to a tax income and financing plan to assist with the Strike Tool proposed expansion. And BFD, who is a part of this development agreement, are the landowners affiliated with Strike Tool, and it's their property where the proposed addition that was described by the tax income and plan will be built. Following the public hearing, you adopted a resolution which authorized approval of the plan. And I mentioned to you at the last meeting that the next step in the process would be to bring forth a development agreement, which is really a contractual agreement between the city and BFD, the property owners. In the development agreement itself, that's been written by Briggs and Morgan Bond Council, probably the most important component of the agreement is in exhibit B, which is the form of the note. And as I mentioned at the public hearing two weeks ago, that the way that this tax income and financing plan is structured is that it will be a reimbursable program so that at such time as the taxes on the property are actually paid, and the city of Cannon Falls receives those taxes from Goodyear County, payment will be issued then back to the owners of the property as a reimbursement for costs that they incurred to redevelop the former bus garage property. So what was authorized in the plan is actually drafted in this contract to basically have that kind of mechanism in terms of the flow of funds for the tax income and program. I don't think there's anything else in the legal document itself that would be surprising or different from what we talked about at the public hearing. It's as was authorized, and this simply puts it into contractual form.
Any discussion?
And I would assume that our lawyer has reviewed it and approved?
Correct. Yep.
Any other? Seeing as there is none, the chair will take a motion to approve resolution 2250 approving the development agreement with BFD of Cannon Falls.
Second.
Motion by Merle, second by Lynn. Any other discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carius. That moves us on to item 7C, which is resolution 2247 approving CUP variance for Dudley Flodeen. And Lynn, you brought that down?
And I brought that down mainly because I had, and I didn't see it, and maybe I missed it, but in the drawings and in the information supplied, I didn't see anything about the parking and how that's being addressed because I'm assuming it's going behind the building?
Correct.
And that there's ample, but I don't want to assume anything. So there's ample parking and it fits with our requirements?
Yeah, two things on the parking. One is in the B1 district, parking is not required. But in this particular instance, parking will be provided, and that'll be in two locations. One is the existing garages that are there will be demolished. There'll be a new single car garage constructed, so there will be space within the new garage. And I want to say Dudley, there's 25, 26, 27, 28 feet probably north of the end of the new addition to the north boundary of the property that Dudley owns. So it'd actually be at least one space off of or aside from the driveway that goes into the garage and one space in the driveway itself that would go into the garage. So with a two-bedroom apartment unit, it would certainly meet the standards that we apply in the other districts.
Okay. That was my only question, and I didn't see it addressed, so.
Any other discussion? Okay, if not, the chair will take a motion to approve the CUP and variance for Dudley Flodeen.
Second.
Motion by Merle, second by Jay, and we have Morris is going to abstain.
Because I rent from Dudley and we use shares, so.
Okay. And that's because he rents from the party that we're dealing with. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries 4-0, want to abstain. All right, that will move us on to item 7D.
I brought this down because I guess I just wasn't quite sure of, I guess I just wanted more description and more background in why that was being redone or platted that way, so.
Did you want me to refer to the graphic or just verbally describe?
You can verbally, I mean, I got the graphic part, but it was just, maybe I just wasn't connecting today, something so.
It's being replatted, you're correct. It's being replatted at this time for a couple of reasons, not the least of which is the existing plat does not include all of the property that's within this plat. So there's property to the west of the original 1974 plat that's going to be a part of this plat. So there's additional land, and in order to describe the site in particular for the Grand State Hotel, they wanted to correct and understand the legal descriptions of the land that's going to be built or be used to be building the hotel. So that is a lot and block description now, and then there will be two other new lots created in the subdivision that don't have existing buildings. So it was partly to correct the original plat, partly to put in, into a platform, the new lots for development of not just the hotel, but the other two vacant lots that are being created. Actually, there's a third lot south of 24, too, so that lot as well.
So technically, the hotel isn't part of this replat? Because that's already a separate plat, or?
No, no. The hotel, the hotel, right now for the hotel, that lot has been purchased, and that's a Meats and Browns description because this plat isn't done yet. So as soon as this plat has been finalized, following the preliminary plat, there has to be a final plat to come to the planning commission and council. Once that's done and approved, we'll file the final plat with Goodyear County, and there will be a new legal description, a lot and block, which will be the site of the hotel.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's a timing issue.
I just wanted to be more clarified, so, okay.
Any other discussion? If not, the chair will take a motion to approve resolution 2248 approving the preliminary plat for Southview Acres.
Second.
Motion by Merle, second by Lynn. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Approved. And that moves us on to item 7E.
I brought this down in regards to the part-time position shared with Goodyear County. And my question was, when I read through it, is that we were giving the county $5,000 payment for office equipment, et cetera. And I questioned that only because when I read further, it also said that we were going to supply him an office space and computer equipment and stuff. So I guess I just wanted that $5,000 a little bit more clarified of exactly what our commitment, because as I read it, it was on a yearly basis. So it'd be $5,000 every year, and you don't replace the equipment every year. I mean, it's probably every two to three years, computer-wise. So I just wanted clarification on that.
We've got Lisa Hanny here from the county.
Good morning. Lisa Hanny from Goodyear County, Land Management Director. That also will cover anything like training. We'd send the person to training that. And the reason we put in there for having a space here is if the city wants to have somebody here physically for so many days, then they would supply a place for them to sit and a computer for them. I mean, if it gets to it, we can do a laptop and they can transfer back and forth. So we're pretty open with that, that whole concept. But that covers basically office space and computers and training form.
So would it be better for us as a city to be up to? I mean, if you're not, if we're not purchasing all those costs and those costs aren't, I mean, if the travel doesn't, we're not realizing all the travel or whatever is anticipated, is it better to say to, you know, up to? And then anything beyond that would be reviewed by the county and the city for approval?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't request more per year. It'd be just a five.
No, but if we don't spend it, is what I'm saying is if the travel isn't required, let's say, or the training isn't required, so that those costs aren't incurred, then why do we want to pay for something we don't, we're not using?
We will be sending the person to training. There will be costs for the computer and software. Every piece of software I get, I have to pay for.
No, and I understand that because I'm in the computer business. I get that.
And I don't know, I don't know what the city plans on having for space here. You know, we can work that out. A lot of, the other agreements that I have with like the city of Red Wing and Dodge County, sometimes they work in our office, and then they're still doing the other city or county work from our office. Sometimes they'll sit in the city of Red Wing, and they'll be logging in and doing Goodyear work. So all those kind of details, we left it pretty open so that we can work with staff to see, be flexible enough to see what they need to do. And if it comes to it that it works better, that we just get them a laptop and they take it with them, you know, we'll work out those details.
Could this be something, with Lynn bringing that up, could this be something that, I mean, for the first year, we're probably going to spend close to that?
Yeah.
For setup costs and everything else, and that we look at it determining in the second year if it's something that we see that's not going to be costing $5,000 because we don't have to buy a new computer, we don't have to buy that, you know, new software that year. I mean, would that be something that we could negotiate?
I think we could change the appendix A fees on that. What the county won't want to change is the half salary benefits.
And I'm fine with that. It was just more of the $5,000. The way I read it, it was set $5,000 every year at a set fee, and maybe Dave, you can add on, but you know, if we're not hiring until later in the year, they go through the training, they're not going to do training probably additional in the next year.
They'll do training every year.
But do we know what those costs are? I guess that's, that's my concern. I guess, you know, it's such a flat fee without any real definition to the fees.
Yeah, what I used to do with Dodge County was our first agreement. What I used to do with them is we tracked everything all through the year, and I tracked it for about four years, and it came in as an average of, for them, it was like $10,000. And so we just, just for accounting and, you know, ease of the contract, we just came up with a flat fee. And so with city of Red Wing, I can't remember if we have a $10,000 fee with them. And so with Cannon Falls, negotiated with the staff and went down to $5,000. There will be, like I say, they'll be going to training every year. So I'm really strong in our department about training the staff and keeping them up to date on things, especially with zoning issues and the laws changing, so. That's why, that's where the $5,000 came from, is to continue the training and computers and office space.
Is this also part of the cost of the office? I mean, renting the space?
It could be seen as that, if you wanted to do that. I didn't want to get down into how much a square foot we're renting. But it was a fee that we figured was a flat fee that we would incur if the person goes to training, their training costs, their travel costs, their hotel if they need to, and all that kind of stuff.
So I assume that the city would get an accountability of what the exact costs are?
Yeah, we certainly can do that, yes.
I mean, that was outlined, so I just want to make sure.
Yep. And then if the city wants to renegotiate that fee next year, we can, you know, certainly bring that forward and see what the commissioners want to say about that.
The first, the first discussions we had on this, there was, like Lisa said, that Dodge County had figured about a $10,000 per year cost, and that was what was first tossed out. And then Dave and I talked a little bit about that, and that's, and we talked with Lisa and came to the $5,000. And we will also be looking at training, you know, whether they're exact training or not. We're not sure yet, but we may have some particular interests in specific training that perhaps wouldn't be a benefit to them, but it's still going to be covered by that $5,000. And the other note is that the county board did approve this, the agreement today, this morning, so.
So my next question is, and I'm having issues with my computer, so I can't bring it up. But what was the start date? Was it in?
April 1st.
April 1st.
April, whatever that.
So this $5,000 is for the first year, and then remains for the second year, even though we're not using it for the first three months? Because I would assume that the heavy hit is in, when you hire because of the new equipment and all of that, and the hiring process and stuff like that. But personally, my own opinion is I'm okay with the $5,000 payment for this year, but I'm not okay with having it a set amount for every year after. I would like to have it revisited and reviewed and to make sure that we know going forward that that $5,000 is an appropriate amount for both parties. I mean, to me, I think it would benefit both parties because obviously rates change and the process changes, and as you said, training and making sure that we're within code and all that kind of stuff, so.
What if the cost comes in higher?
You're renegotiating, I guess. I mean, I understand that, you know, if we set the amount and the cost goes up, it benefits the city. But we also may be spending a lot less than what is anticipated. We don't know that. It's a brand-new adventure for us. We haven't done this before, and, you know, I just, long-term is, you know, that's my only question.
It is a three-year contract, and it can be, we do have a termination clause, but that termination clause is basically, basically to help us both with budgeting. So if you decide to terminate the agreement, you'd have to let the other party know by June 1st.
Right.
And then it would go through, because in that way, we can both budget the loss.
Accordingly, yeah. So that's why I brought it down, and that's my main concern, so.
Any other discussion? Okay. If not, the chair will take a motion to approve the contract with, and my computer's screwing up again.
I guess, does the council have any other concerns about this? Or you're okay with the $5,000 every year?
I am okay with it, because I don't think it's a, it's not a made-up number. It sounds like it's arrived at after years of tracking costs at great administrative and clerical expense to the county. So it's, it is a very well-educated, I would say, estimate of what it would be, and we actually have it adjusted downward, it sounds like, after negotiation.
I was just going to say, Dave and Ron obviously have talked about it to get a rough idea of what they're spending or whatever, so.
And the county knows what it spends in its curriculum. They have, that's the thing, we don't have a training curriculum for this position, but they do. I know you do. But they, the county does have a training curriculum for this kind of position. So they are in a better position than we are to accurately estimate the cost of training a person up to the appropriate standard. I would, that's, I feel comfortable with it for those reasons.
Any other discussion? Not, the chair will take a motion to approve the contract with Goodyear County relating to provisions of planning and zoning services by the county.
Seconded.
Motion by Merle, second by Cedar. Any other discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carius.
Thank you.
All right, that moves us on to reports. Mr. Maroney?
Just thanks to all the council for your willingness to consider something like this. I think it's an important move on behalf of the city, and certainly I anticipate some positive outcome and results from having the additional staff assistance here helping with planning commission and different projects they're working on. So thank you to each member of the council.
Chief?
Just a reminder, obviously everybody's aware we're going into our holiday season, and with that, there'll be lots of traveling, but also, you know, we want people to be aware of impairing driving and make sure that they plan ahead, have a sober driver or plan to utilize a taxi or some other ride program. And when they're traveling, do see people over the holidays. Just remember, there's lots of other people traveling. Wear your seatbelt, drive the speed limit, and watch out for the cars ahead of you and behind you, and maintain safe distances. That's all I have.
Thanks, chief.
Thanks.
Ron?
I'd like to thank council for an extremely good, productive, busy year. We got a lot of, a lot of stuff done. We've got a busier slate ahead of us for next year. I want to thank Jay for your support, working with you this year. Merle, you too. You're a good kid. Don't let anybody else tell you any differently.
I wouldn't listen to him anymore.
But I've really appreciated working with you guys over the last few years, and actually even hiring me crazy. So thank you, and best of luck to you.
What about? Merle?
I'd like to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays. I want to thank the staff for all the help that I've had over the years on this council. Best of luck with the next council. And I would like to charge the next council with making decisions that benefit the city and not their personal agenda.
Here, here. Nothing for me.
Yep, same, same here. Thank you to those who have served. I know it's always a big job, and it takes away from your family and personal time. So I don't think enough people realize the sacrifices that are made, so thank you very much. And Merry Christmas.
Jay?
Thanks, staff, and thank you to the city residents and everything for letting me be up on the council. And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Morris?
Just thank to Jay and Merle and I'm sure you don't forget a lot of time.
And Kathy. She's not here.
Kathy too.
Spent a lot of time, and hope everybody has a happy holiday.
And I'd like to say thank you to Jay, Merle, and Kathy for the time, number one, the time it took to run for council, the time that you have to put in preparing for your meetings. Hope you got an education at the same time, because we all know when we first get into this, we think we know it all, and we get here and we get, our eyes get opened up a little bit. Because not everything that we really think we can get done can be done without, because there's more than one vote up here. It's not just, you know, one person's agenda. It's, it's, the whole council has to make the decisions and has to vote on it. So I want to say thank you. And with that, Merle?
Blackway here, appreciation for your service as a council member for City of Cannon Falls.
Jay?
Appreciation for your work, and I want to say thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
And we also have one for Kathy Gallups, and I want to thank Kathy for the time she's spent on the council the last few years. She couldn't make it tonight. Again, so thanks to all. We've got the new council members coming on, on the 3rd of January, so I hope they're gearing up and getting ready to hit it hard and heavy and getting ready for their education. And I'd also like to say thanks to the staff for another good year, and also Merry Christmas to everybody in Cannon Falls and the surrounding area. And we'll see you next year. With that, the Chair will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.